Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the January 3rd, 2019 Board of Supervisors meeting. Actually, we're going to call the order of the Planning Commission first and then the Board of Supervisors. Regardless of the meeting type, we always start with a word of prayer. Mr. Slade, would you be kind enough to get us started this morning?
Father, we begin the new year by first acknowledging that we thank you for your presence here with us. And, Father, we ask that you would be very real and present with us today to give us the wisdom and the discernment that we need to make good and wise decisions on behalf of all citizens of the county. Father, we pray for those that are dealing with the inclement weather. I pray, Father, that you'll just help all of our first responders and our folks to pay attention to that. Lord, help them as they are going about their business today. Keep them safe. Father, I pray that as we move through this process today, in participation of our government, help us to never take that for granted. Lord, thank you for the privilege that it is to be in a free and open society where we can participate in our government. We pray all of this in Christ's name again.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Slade. Consideration approval on November 29th, 2018, Planning Commission minutes? Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Old business, Ms. Renee, do we need to discuss anything?
No, sir.
All right, we'll move on to new considerations. Amy, please, ma'am.
All right, the first item is a conditional use permit for Robert Hobson Jr. at 539 Baker Lane. Mr. Hobson is seeking a conditional use permit to place a 1995 16-by-76 manufactured home on this property. It's located on the north side of Baker Lane. It's a 3.56 acre parcel that's zoned RE1. That's an aerial view of the property. There was an old home on that property that has burned several years ago. He wants to put this mobile home in the same spot as that old house. This is a view of that property. And then these are surrounding properties.
Make a motion if we said it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
Next is a conditional use permit for S&amp;P Enterprises Incorporated Duncan Marine at 6694 Highway 25. They're seeking a conditional use permit for an open storage area for boats and RVs. This property is located on the west side of Highway 25. It's a 10-acre parcel that's zoned C2. This is an aerial. And they were previously approved for a conditional use permit in 2011 to construct a facility for boat sales and service and enclosed boat storage. You can see those buildings here. They were all, the enclosed storage was to run along the north property line. They've built one of those buildings at this time, and they do have plans to finish that and run down that north property line with those enclosed buildings. This is their site plan. The open storage that they're proposing at this time is approximately 20,000, 25,000 square feet. It's going to be in this area here. This is where those enclosed storage, the first building ends here, and they're going to start at the end of those buildings, and they want to have the open storage in this area right here. They're also seeking approval of a future open storage area to the rear of the existing building, approximately 92,000 square feet. It would be in this area back here, behind the buildings. This won't be visible from Highway 25, and there'll be limited visibility to this area here from 25, especially once those buildings are completed along this property line. All the adjoining property around is heavily wooded, and so there won't be any visibility from surrounding properties unless, you know, the timber is cut or what have you.
Yeah, one thing I wanted to add on that, you see that, on that picture she just had, there's a tree line that he's cut. He's put his fence inside of his property, I think, right, Duane? So, I mean, his fence line's inside. So, there's always going to be a tree line buffer on his property that won't be cut down, so that'll be good.
Now, that tree line buffer is not on his property, it's on the adjoining property.
Yeah, I think he's still got some, I think, on his, on his side. He's got a little bit on his side, so... All right, I'll make the motion, set the hearing.
Thanks, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
All right, the next item is a conditional use permit for Heather Power at 219 Oak Creek Circle. Ms. Power is seeking the conditional use permit to place a 16-by-80 manufactured home on this property. It's at the end of Oak Creek Circle. She hasn't purchased a mobile home yet and doesn't know a year model. The home will be for her mother, and it's a 15-acre parcel that's zoned A2. That's an aerial view of the property. Ms. Power has a home on that property now, so this will be the second dwelling on a 15-acre parcel. This is her site plan. The new home will be in this area of the property, and that's Mrs. Power's house where she lives. This is a view of that property. This is a close-up of where that home will be placed. This is Mrs. Power's home, and then this is an adjoining property.
Did you have any calls or anything on this?
No, sir, we haven't had any calls. Signs went out before Christmas on all of these, and we haven't had any calls.
I'll make the motion, we said it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Okay, the next item is the dimensional variance for Community Place Nursing Home on Lake Vista Place. They're seeking a 20-foot variance from the required 40-foot front setback. This property is located at the end of Lake Vista in the cul-de-sac which runs off of Spillway Road. It's a 10-acre parcel that's zoned C, no, I'm sorry, it's a 6.38 acre parcel that's zoned C2, and it backs up to Regatta subdivision. This is their site plan. They were approved for a conditional use permit to construct a 60-bed scale nursing home in December of 2016, and this is the building here. This outer dotted line, that's the 40-foot setback. The corner of the building on the west side and on the east side would be in that 40-foot setback. This is the 20-foot line, and so they're asking for a 20-foot variance from that setback. At the closest point, they do own an additional lot up here at the front, so that does give them more room from the closest point. These are the elevations. This is the north elevation of that building. This is the east elevation. South elevation. And this is the west elevation. This is their color rendering. The building will be, the exterior materials will be brick and vinyl siding. And it's going to be 40,351 square feet. This is a view of that property at the end of the cul-de-sac. You can see the Regatta subdivision there. And then these are surrounding properties.
I'll make a motion, set the hearing.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morris. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
All right, next is a conditional use permit for HSC Florence LLC at 1500 Highway 469 South. They're seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 9,100-square-foot Dollar General store on this property. It's located on the west side of Highway 469 South. They're purchasing 1.60 acres of an 8.50 acre parcel. It's zoned A1. That's an aerial view of that property. This is their site plan. You can see the placement of the building here. All the paved areas will be concrete. They do show on their site plan a six-foot privacy fence that's required for screening purposes. These are the elevations of that building. They're proposing split face block on the front of the building, and the sides and rear of the building will be metal. This is their landscape plan. They show sod, and they do have some plantings along the front of the building. Casey Martin is here today representing HSC, if y'all have any questions for her. This is a view of that property down on Highway 469. It's kind of between these stakes. And this is the, where the access to Highway 469 will be. These are surrounding properties.
Have you kind of inclined to see the other sidewalls bricked up as opposed to metal? You said the President, and I think if we're going to spot, essentially, it's not spots, like we do allow commercial use and ag use, obviously. Like, what did we do on that Dollar General up on 25?
I'm trying, that's what I was trying to think.
Most recent one they built.
I thought we said brick, the, at least the facing sides, right?
One side, I don't, I don't know that you really can see. It's the other side that you, when you go on Pilskal Road, that you really get a look, and I think it's brick, but I...
I'm not sure, I don't remember. I can check that.
I'd rather see brick on the two sides.
And back too, for that matter.
Not really the back, because it's backing up into where it is.
Well, I mean, it can't be that much more money. Mr. Martin, what is that? You have any idea where you...
Ms. Martin, Casey.
Okay. You have any idea as far as the cost to buy out any of the bricks on the three walls? Ain't no big deal to us, I mean, obviously, I mean, it, but, I mean, yeah.
I'd like to say at least on the two sides, if it's not too costly, if you did one more, it would, I think it would, I think it would be appreciated and enhance. It would be appreciated and set a little standard of what may want a future would be in that area. Another thing, I'm sure you have, and I hope we've looked at the way it's entering the Highway 469, your entrance, as far as sites and everything, because that's a lot of traffic.
That's how it makes that call.
Has there been any communication with the highway department about the access? Do you know where, do we know where that stands?
Uh, they are reviewing the...
Okay. It's not permitted at the time. I understand, thank you.
They do say that sight distance is...
Okay. Can I ask a clarifying question? I believe the proposal is split-faced block on the front? Are you guys, you're saying brick? I want to make sure we're speaking the same language here. Are we talking about split-faced block on the facing sides, or are we talking about brick?
I ain't, I don't guess it really... I haven't really seen a split block on the sides.
A lot of the convenience store, well, on the sides, actually.
One of the, I would think one of the other, wouldn't you? I mean, I don't really have a preference between split block and brick.
The Dollar Generals, the two that I'm thinking about that's gone up recently have been that split face, I'm pretty sure. Same thing on our, isn't that what's on our building that we're building? I say Mike's building?
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't mean to wake you up, Mike, I'm sorry.
Tim's distracting me back there, I think.
Okay, I thought so. And I'm pretty sure that's what's on those two most recent ones, and...
That's probably the most...
I guess what's on the Dollar General up there.
Yeah.
When they, when they do their pricing, we just want to make sure that they're pricing what you guys are talking about.
That's probably going to be the best cost.
We could, we could leave it up to them, obviously, if they want to go all brick or all split.
Y'all want to go marble.
I mean, I'd leave it kind of at the cost, I guess. Split face is the best way to go. I just think I'd rather see something other than metal.
That's, I mean, that's just something I could be ready to address at the next meeting, obviously, unless we're just sitting here and hearing.
I think what I want to hear is why can't we get something nice? I think that's what I'm going to hear. Okay.
You said the motion, you said the hearing.
I said the motion, it's set to public hearing, yeah.
Motion, Mr. Morris, second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee. I think we're leaving to the site plan architecture review, that and thing?
There is none for today.
All right, Mr. Slade, you're good to go.
Sure is. Quick to jump.
Yes, I'm ready to roll, but...
That's right.
Oh, he's ready to roll. He's already gone and mind it, roll tide stuff.
There we go. I didn't, wasn't going to say a word about it.
Hey, I could read it all.
I wouldn't either.
First item under nuisance property is the Pless Wells Jr. Estate nuisance property hearing, 2412 South Pearson Road, District 1. I'll open that public hearing before Renee demonstrates. Let me just ask, is there anyone here representing or planning to speak on behalf of the Pless Wells Jr. Estate? Okay, do you mind going ahead and coming forward, please? Renee, go ahead and demonstrate, please.
Okay, everybody remembers, I'm sure, that we've had this as a nuisance property for a while now. Mr. Wells has passed away, and these pictures were taken March the 26th, showing the condition of the property. These are the new pictures that were taken December the 31st.
Mycusa Wells, I'm his wife, and I'm at 122A Meadow Wick Drive, Clinton, Mississippi, 3905 seat.
Well, you've, I mean, you've made real progress, and I'm sorry for the loss, your loss, and as well as the, what it's put on you all as a family. Someone has made a lot of progress in cleaning up. I've been through there, and I want you to understand that this is not something we single out. This is something that comes to us from complaints from wherever, whomever, and that's where our department has to kind of take over and look into it, just as if a complaint came to Sheriff's Department. But I guess what's, what's the, tell me where we're headed now, and what do you lack, and what's kind of your plan to try to, I guess, get the rest of it done?
Well, everything is, like, pending right now because of the estate.
Uh-huh.
And so we're just waiting because it's airs, you know, in the air on these. So, everything is pending right now.
Well, even pending-wise, I mean, show me the one that's yesterday.
These are, these are the most current.
Okay.
This one.
Yeah, okay, like, I mean, I don't understand even if it's pending, why this other stuff can't be cleaned up. It doesn't, it's not anything, maybe not the cars, but the refrigerator and, I don't know, just, I don't know what all this stuff is, but I don't, I don't think that's, well, it looks like something almost like a couch up here, or something by the front garage, but why some of that can't be cleaned up irregardless of an estate issue? Someone has cleaned up a big portion of it already.
Yes.
I believe it was his sister?
I think it was maybe her daughter.
A daughter, a daughter, okay.
Daughter.
She did a great job, but I'm just wondering why we couldn't at least clean up what's not going to be of any value anyway? I don't think some of that's going to be of any value, do you? You tell me, I'm just asking.
I don't, because it's like attorneys involved and stuff too, so...
Well, I guess I have to lean to my attorney on that.
I would be curious to know who's sort of taking responsibility for all of this? Who's sort of in charge of the estate?
The Heinz County Court Department.
Is the person representing the estate from the family?
No one from the family. It's in the court's hands.
But somebody has to be considered in charge of the estate. That would be an administrator or an executor. Who is that person?
The court. They put the courts over it.
The Chancery Clerk for Heinz County?
Yes, sir.
Is the executor of the estate or the administrator of the estate?
Yes, sir.
Interesting, okay. That, that, that gives us a whole different dynamic. Why is the estate pending in Heinz County?
Because my husband was residing with me at the time of his death.
All right, and so did he own property in Heinz County at the time of his death?
No, sir.
All right. Not sure why we're in Heinz County.
Because, they say because of where he was delivering.
Well, I mean, that's, that's something that's between y'all and the court, but I think that's problematic. Guys, what I would suggest is we obviously find out some more details about the status of the estate and how that's going to be handled in the court system in Heinz County. What I would propose is that Ms. Wells give all of her contact information to Renee so that we can communicate with somebody on behalf of Amber, and let me get in touch with the Heinz County Chancery Department and find out how it, how it is if they're going to address this. One way to handle it may be to have a clerk ask the court permission to effectively clean all of this up, to either put it on the family. Y'all can either get it cleaned up, or we're going to hire somebody and take it out of the estate value to get it cleaned up. But it can't just sit and do nothing.
Can I ask two questions? How many acres is involved in this estate?
I'm not sure. I have my documents outside.
Would it be about three, or about 30, or about 100? I mean, just about?
At this property here?
Well, in the estate, because I'm sure...
The estate that you all have to deal with these means, not the overall Wells estate, but the Wells estate of, of, planned, your husband.
I'm not sure.
How many people are in this estate? So, I mean, if we were to...
Six. It's me and five children.
Because Wells, I know, own quite a bit of land around the Wells themselves, but I don't know about this particular part. It may be only three acres, I don't know.
Thanks.
All right, well, this...
I would just say, let's pass it for 30 days. One of the reasons why we brought this back before us was because this is not first rodeo for this piece of property, as we all know. And so, when we found out that Mr. Wells had passed away, you know, he's been before us multiple times, the decision was made to bring it back one more time so that we could have the estate before us, which is what's happened today. So, we kind of have a starting point again, unfortunately. So, I would suggest that we pass it for 30 days, set it off for 30 days. That would give me an opportunity, and Renee and I, an opportunity to work together to get the Chancery Clerk in Heinz County and get our hands around where the estate proceeding is and who's sort of in charge, and then communicate with them about getting this property cleaned up during the pendency of the estate. Okay? In the meantime, it would be in the best interest of the family, Ms. Wells and the children, to do everything they can now so that the Chancery Clerk is not forced to spend assets out of the estate addressing something like this, when it would be simple enough for them just to get all of that unsightly stuff behind the house, get it out of view.
There's enough room, Gray, don't say that. There's not enough room behind the house in the woods to put it all back there. No, don't, we can't do that. It is if you clean up.
Find somewhere to put it. It doesn't have to be liquidated, it doesn't have to be sold, it doesn't have to be destroyed until, you know, the court needs to address what's going to happen with all that. It just needs to be out of there. So, that's what we're indicating would be in the best interest of everybody here. It'd be the cheapest way to solve this problem is for the family themselves to clean that property up and safeguard whatever's there that has any value, and then we won't have to deal with the court system in Heinz County and the potential that money's going to have to be spent that we don't have when the court has to get involved, clean that up. So, I would say, set it off 30 days, and let's see if we can get some traction.
I'm fine with that, but just like, if you said there's, I just thought something, you said there's a, you and six children?
Five children.
Five children, okay, so six of them. Well, if it's just children that are involved, you and, I mean, you all ought to be able to decide whether some of that's just, I mean, on your own, say, we're not going to want any of this stuff, and go and get rid of it, clean up some of yourself. What he's trying to tell you is, I think, there's going, if it costs, it's going to be money that's coming out of basically your estate, what you could get. So, it'd be to your benefit, if y'all got together, if you say, hey, let's decide what's not worth anything, go and at least start cleaning this up.
Yeah, the Heinz County Chancery Court is not going to take on this responsibility.
Right.
They're going to provide for it to be done and take it out of the estate.
Right.
And if we have to do it, which would be our right under the law, then we're simply going to take it out of the property. It'd be a tax hit to the property. So, clearly, the best option would be for the family themselves to deal with the unsightly condition.
Get together among themselves and say, hey, we want to clean this up.
And the key is, get it out of view. Just get it off of this property and get it out of view, so that the neighbor complains.
Yeah, don't just move it right up the hill to the next class property, because the people that are complaining about this are looking at all the, all the, I mean, it's been going on for four, five years, so, anyway. All right, well, I'll, I'll make that motion, we just kind of table it, yeah.
Motion, Mr. Morris, to table it for 30 days. Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Next, Mr. Slade. Welcome, Mr. Bishop.
Happy New Year!
Hey, way to go, Jay. Way to go, Jay.
Start the year off right.
Right.
Someone said, "Go qualify." Makes me know we're running for reelection around here.
No District 5 properties in the nuisance, Jay, so you just hang in there.
I'm good.
The next item, item B, is Kenneth Wells nuisance property. This is 2418 South Pearson Road, again, District 1. Before Renee demonstrates, I want to ask is if there is anyone here to speak on behalf of Kenneth Wells concerning the property at 2418 South Pearson Road? Is there anyone here to speak on that matter? Yes, okay. Gentlemen, we had heard anecdotally that Mr. Wells had relocated away from this property, so I'm, if that's the case, I'm not surprised if there's no one here to address that. We'll ask Renee to demonstrate. That hearing is open.
All right, these pictures were taken March 26th. You know, this has been an ongoing complaint. Mr. Wells did receive the notice, and he came by the office and visited with Duane yesterday. He has attempted to start tearing down the old house, and he has done some cleanup of all that rubbish and debris around the house. He, you know, said that the tear, the tearing down of the house would be slow, but that he would get it done.
My understanding, he has started.
He did on the back corner.
You look through the track there, you see some daylight where the roof fell in.
That fell in on his tractor while he was pushing on it.
Just he just kept pushing.
So, obviously, he's...
All right, I think, well, I understand.
Guys, we brought this one back. This is a frequent flyer, obviously, so we brought it back. Can I please just suggest that we go ahead and declare a nuisance again? This would be an official declaration of nuisance. Obviously, Duane can continue to communicate with the gentleman and watch the process as it unfolds, assuming that, you know, the progress is being made frequently enough, then there's no need for it to be pushed up to justice, but we've got, we need to just go ahead and do it.
I'll make the motion, declare it a justice, I mean, a nuisance, and continue and keep, make sure more and more at a time coming down.
Are we sending it to Justice Court?
Yeah, it's, what I would like for you guys to do is authorize the Building Department to choose among options. One would be to go ahead and refer it up to Justice Court, to be handled as a Justice Court nuisance matter. That would be one. The second option would be to, to prepare perhaps as many as two quotes on what it would take to take the remaining part of this structure down and clean the site up, and have those available for you, make sure that they are sufficiently lengthy enough. Give us a quote that would be good for 180 days or whatever we can get out of it. Just make sure we structure the quotes. But go ahead and authorize her to receive those quotes and then come back at a later date and present those to you as an alternative to sending it up to Justice Court. That's all. No decision.
We're not really going to justice, we're getting it ready where, at that time, if it's just something that have, it can be, so we might go through all this again.
That's correct.
Well, I guess, what's the downside of sending it to Justice Court?
The downside?
Yeah.
I don't guess there's a downside to any of, I don't think you'll get much, any more results sending it up there, or not.
I think what, or what you're suggesting is use the Justice Court action as the pressure point to get something done.
But you're not, you don't, I don't think it's going to get it, you're going to do any good there either. There's nobody to do it, Jay.
If we were to get out there and we've got a contract with somebody, and they show up, and the owner says, "Not coming on my property, house," with a gun, where do we stand there?
Well, but...
Is that when we got to go to Justice Court? Because we don't really have a warrant.
Actually, we have the ability under the law to remediate the property under our police power. It's a, it's a nuisance consideration for public health, safety, and welfare. And so, we would in fact have the authority to enter on the property and to carry out what the board has decided. We would obviously want to coordinate with the sheriff to make sure that, that, that nothing crazy happened, but yes, we would have the authority to go on the property and take remedial action.[1793.61]
But he's, he's there, I mean, he, maybe he will tear it down, I doubt it, but he's working, has started somewhat, so maybe he will.
But, his exemption would not apply to this add-on. It would only apply to the underlying applicable.
All right, all right, well, I just send the declared nuisance, like we're talking about, play it along, see I go leave it where...
The two options being that Renee's choice, she can either go up to justice with it, or she can bring you guys back, the better of two quotes on tearing it down, and let y'all approve that at the time.
Yeah, well, yeah, but we could always go back, we could go back up to justice if we choose, if we set it this way.
Yes, what I'm, what I'm wanting to avoid here, yes, sir, that's the, yes, you can, what I'm wanting to avoid is us having to reset this thing.
I know it.
Yeah, so, we got it in hearing format now, and let's go ahead and get all the options on the table, so that we don't lock ourselves in and have to redo this.
Well, I thought this was what I just did. You, you're going to get the, you've already declared it a nuisance to go to justice, but you just hadn't pulled the plug to go to justice.
That's correct.
And we also get the same, we also at the same time have to see what it costs to just knock it down.
And that's, that's what I wanted in the motion, was that both of those were being undertaken right now by Renee, hold the Justice Court to see where we are, but go ahead and get the two quotes and try to get a length of time that those would be valid, so that if you guys decide you want to just take it down yourselves and not worry about Justice Court, you have that at your disposal.
Well, I know those are an eyesore, believe me, because they used to be in my district. But I'm also pretty sure nobody's going to ever buy them.
No, not going to buy them. Well, you're going to buy the land?
Yeah.
Not even the land?
Right.
No, because they're family.
There's a dent in landfill right behind them.
It's family land. I mean, all that's family, Wells property. Well, but, okay, but if you take it to justice, he ain't got the money to tear it down, how does that going to work? We've been down that road too.
Oh, this is related to the previous?
Yeah, they're next door.
Oh, my bad.
I mean, like, throw a rock.
I got you.
Well, they're next door.
Place, place is perfect.
And even if we were to get it cleaned up, who can say they're not going to come back up there and do this again? Because it's been cleaned up once before.
Yep, that's kind of beyond...
It's worse than I knew it would be.
But I mean, it was cleaned up once before, and it's managed to get in this state again.
Okay, what's the answer?
Well, I think they get their butt on in jail enough, they'll finally decide, you know.
All right, motion by Mr. Morrison over here, I'm going to second it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Renee.
All right, to the extent we didn't close that hearing, it's closed. Item C is the Ben and Lisa Mason's nuisance property, 166 Hepern Hill Drive, this is District Three. We'll open that public hearing. I'll ask Renee to demonstrate, if anyone's here on behalf of the Ben and Lisa Mason, yes, you'll come forward, please. Renee, if you'll demonstrate, please.
These pictures were taken in November of 2018. We had received a complaint about grass and weeds, inoperable vehicle, and this abandoned or vacant home. Certified mail was sent and received. Again, these pictures were in November of 2018. And then, these are the new pictures that were taken December thirty-first.
All things, hadn't been moved, is the vehicles?
Would you introduce yourself, sir?
I'm Ben Mason. I live right across the street, 166. I had to move out of there to take care of my mother and my wife at the same time, and I couldn't move my mother, so I had to move across the street. But, everything has been cleaned up except the vehicles, and they don't belong to me. I did get, finally get touch with people that owns them, they both come get them and moved them out of there. And then, the house and stuff, I made arrangements, given it to my oldest daughter. Her and her husband are trying to decide if they want to tear it down completely and build or remodel. They hadn't, they got, trying to find out which one to be the cheapest one. But it has been cleaned up, made presentable from the front end.
What's, what's your pleasure, Mr. Jones?
He has cleaned it up and get the vehicles.
Give him thirty days, we're doing a continuous thirty days, or which one?
Vehicles don't belong to me.
Right, because you can't, we need, need something that, that we can put a little pressure on you, and you can put pressure on those folks to keep coming out those vehicles.
They supposed to get them done, moved this week.
Okay.
If the rain holds up long enough, they'll come out. The truck runs, and the other car runs. Boy that come through, he had blowout with a Honda pilot, works out of town, he's supposed to be back in this week, get it moved. The truck actually belonged to my son and his wife, native Doris, and it was holding up on the hook on the truck, and I finally got in touch with her, and she signed it over to him, so he's going to come get it.
Okay. How about we do a continuous, Mr. Jones, sixty days? Or would you do something different? Would you like to do something different?
Go ahead and declare it a nuisance. Yeah, that's monitoring it for sixty days, that way it don't have to come back before nine.
All right, I make a motion, Mr. Mason, I appreciate what you've done to this point, and it just, just kind of lets you know that, hey, the county's kind of pushing you a little bit, so you can kind of stay on those folks, come do what they're supposed to do, you know, you keep Mr. Jones informed of what's going on, when the cars get removed, please let him know, just kind of keep open that communications with him, and we'll be glad to work with you as we move forward on this thing and put that...
You know, I was born and raised here.
Yeah.
That's where I was raised at.
So, I know it's tough. Yeah, I know it is. I make a motion, we sent the movement to, to Justice Court. Second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mason. All right, Mr. Slade, move on.
Officially, we are closing that public hearing. Item D is a continuation of the Carley and Brandon Moore nuisance property, 124 Tiffany Drive, District Four property. I'll open that public hearing and ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate for us. I'll also ask Carley and Brandon Moore, anyone here on behalf of that man? That's it, Renee?
All right, so this was a continuation from the November twenty-ninth meeting. These pictures were taken in September, showing the condition of the property. We got complained about the grass and the weeds that haven't been cut.
Is this, is this the one that the lady, said they hadn't cut the grass this year?
Or Brandon Estates?
No.
It said Evergreen Estates.
Evergreen, yeah.
She was here and...
Today?
Said it was messed up.
No, at the last meeting.
Right, okay.
And she said that she would get it taken care of. The, let's see, these are the new pictures. We don't think that she's really done that much, but...
Looks like they, well, I see some weeds, some weeds, but...
Frog's got it.
Yeah, you can see here.
That's what her objective was, wasn't it, I believe?
Yeah, she, she pretty much said they thought the winter would take care of a lot of their problems.
Freeze.
What do you suggest?
Declare it a nuisance and will...
Send it up?
Yeah.
I mean, we give her, but it has been raining ever since we told her to cut the grass.
Yeah, and she won't be in there now, probably.
Well, we can, you know, I'll give her a little additional time, but obviously, it doesn't appear like since November twenty-ninth that she took any action.
Well, she said they didn't cut it all this year. My memory is right, they didn't cut it one time this year.
Well, that's what the neighbor said, was that they hadn't cut it.
She, it was a long time, she said.
She didn't claim the mail this time that we sent her.
She did not.
Let's, now, tell me if we can do this, my legal counsel over here.
That's a good year.
Declare it a nuisance, and then have Renee track it?
Yes.
I want to give them enough time that they can get a lawnmower in there.
It might be spring.
And it may be, I mean, but at least they would get a lawnmower started, and it may be the middle of April, really, I'm being serious, but if you can track it for certain, how many days or months? And by that time, if it hadn't anything been done, then we don't have to redo this, and you just pull the trigger.
Yes.
And I would, I'd like to use maybe April, because it's, I mean, well, yeah, I mean, what's there is not going to get worse between now and then, and April will start getting worse.
There's a motion, I'm going to say, by belief, from Mr. Gaines, too, you know what he wants to do?
Yes, sir.
You all know what he wants to do?
Declare a public nuisance, and ask Renee to monitor it and give them time, so that when we get into the spring, see whether or not they're going to actually start taking care of the property. If it's clear that they're not, up to Justice Court it goes.
I work for Mr. Gaines.
Yes.
Motion second about its crossing, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, that hearing is closed. Item E is the continuation of the Ken Townsend nuisance property, 167 Valley Cove, this is District Three. We'll open that public, reopen that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate, and I would ask Ken Townsend, or someone else we have come forward, okay?
All right, so this was continued from the nine-twenty-seven meeting. This property, Mr. Townsend had stated was almost completely paid for, and so he was, I guess, supposed to come back today and just let us know what's transpired since then. These pictures were taken in September of eighteen. And these are the pictures that were taken on the thirty-first.
It actually looks worse.
That's the one that the guy was buying it from?
Yes, sir.
Has that worked out?
It has not. I did send him a certified letter to be here today, and he is not here. I'm sorry.
He right here.
Well, he can, he, this is the guy that I have a contact with, so, so, he can speak for himself.
Good.
Should I sit down, sir? Can you state your name, please, sir?
James Purnell.
Hey, Mr. Purnell, we need to get it cleaned up, but before, when you weren't here, there was some discussion about you almost paid him off, still owed him a little money, I think, and so, we left it in limbo, thinking it would be resolved within that period of time, and it was been like sixty days, I think.
I let a friend of mine live there, that's his junk. I told him to clean it up and get it out of there, I got the letter. Camphor Corral had to go and all that mess, and he hadn't done it yet.
Well, the owner of the property is the one who's fixing to get the hammer dropped on it.
Right.
But you, you're living there, but you let somebody else, you own it, but somebody else is living there?
Well, I owe Mr. Townsend about five or six hundred dollars, and it'll be mine, but he said, if this wasn't resolved, I could be, I'd be evicted, which I live next door with my girlfriend.
Okay, so somebody else is living there?
Right, correct.
Okay, I was trying to get the picture, okay.
What are options here, Mr. Slade?
The option, obviously, is that it's the property that is unsightly, and the owner of the property is responsible for the condition of the property. That's why Mr. Townsend is here. He is the owner of the property. There may be an agreement with respect to the sale, but that's of absolutely no moment to us at all. He is the title owner of the property, and so it's his responsibility, the condition of the property is his responsibility. My suggestion, strong suggestion, is to declare the nuisance and ask Renee to refer it up to Justice Court, and the owner of the property is going to face a Justice Court judge with respect to the condition of the property. Whatever has to happen to get that remediated, to avoid that, needs to happen.
What, what if, if he's the owner, and, and he's got this, what is his, or what are his rights, just go in there and start, have somebody go and start hooking the stuff and cleaning it out?
Yeah, I, I can't address that, that's an issue of contract between these gentlemen. They have a contract apparently with respect to the sale of the property, perhaps it addresses the condition of the property, perhaps it does not. We're not responsible to know, understand, appreciate, or even refer to that agreement, it means nothing to us. We are here to talk about the condition of the property with the owner of the property. So, that's why Mr. Townsend keeps getting hard times about it.
Yeah, and we...
He may have rights here, but that's going to be an issue that he needs to address with his legal counsel against Mr. Purnell. That's not us, we're not involved in that.
All right, so I'm kind of leaning towards, go ahead and moving this up to Justice Court, Key, and, and, and work with Dwayne, and he'll kind of, you know, see how the progress is going, and do whatever you need to put the leverage, Mr. Purnell, to get it cleaned up, you know, because at the end of the day, as much as I'd like to put it off on him and his problem, at the end of the day, it sits right back in your lap, because you are the legal owner, and as much as I would like to try to, you know, help you alleviate yourself from this situation, and nothing we can really do.
We, we, we've run into this a lot of times, just, and before we find out somewhere else owns the property.
You need to give it to me, so, it's kind of...
And Mr. Purnell's got a lot of money invested in this property, so I would assume it's his benefit to get it cleaned up and get it moved on before you really exercise your legal right to take the property back, and he forfeits all his money, you know, which is ultimately what can happen if a judge so decides. But I'm going to make the motion to move it up to Justice Court, and I'll continue to work with Dwayne on solving this problem. Second, Mr. Morrison, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like a sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, that's right. We'll close that public hearing. Item F is a continuation of the Ken Townsend nuisance property, 146 Sunny Lane, District Three. We'll reopen that public hearing, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate, and Mr. Townsend is already here.
All right, so this was continued from the nine-twenty-seven meeting. This is the condition of the property, September twenty-fourth. Mr. Townsend has worked on getting the trailer down.
Believe you did, Ken.
So, just a little bit left there for him to finish cleaning up.
Now, he has torn down four or five in the last three months out there, so he is tearing them down and moving them out, those that he can.
I think we're square on this one, don't you, Mr. Jones?
I do.
All right, get it down, Key, we appreciate it.
Just show them these first, just show them these first.
We, we will close that public hearing and, and state for the record that no action is taken or necessary in that matter.
All right, next, Mr. Slade.
Yes, sir. Item G is a continuation of the, yeah, the Orly, the Orly Johnson nuisance property at 192 Floyd Street, this is District One. We'll reopen that public hearing. Is, is anyone here on behalf of this particular man? Okay, thank you. Renee, if you'll demonstrate, please.
Okay, so complaints have been received about this property. These pictures were taken March the twentieth of 2018. This was continued from the September twenty-seventh meeting as well. And then, these are the current pictures that were taken on the thirty-first.
Valerie Johnson, 192 Floyd Street, Fox, Mississippi, three, three-nine-zero-seven-three.
This is the property I explained to y'all before that has a problem, that has a ditch that runs through there, it's a ditch, it's not our ditch, it's just a ditch that goes through the, all through the, that area. And the culvert that was put in there back the developer, fifty years ago, or a long time ago, has deteriorated to a point she can't get across it. And I've done several, tried to find something that she could use to put in there. Anyway, she's done some things on her part, but it's not, until something's put in there where you can cross in there, she's really in a, a pickle.
I mean, I got pictures, if you want to see how, when it rains.
I, I know, I know what it looks like, and I, it's an unfortunate situation that we can't do anything for it, and I know other places down there that have actually have built bridges and things, but there goes the money, I don't know what, what to do. I've, I've tried to put the word out of something I could cut the ends out of, and make sure you could have someone put it in.
I've, I've got them removed, and she come back to the, the other one. All that stuff right there behind the trucks cleaned up. And the guy next, and the cars gone, that truck runs. The guy next door is going to get all the metal and lawn mowers and stuff and take it to scrap yard.
Do we not have any current pictures?
What, these, yeah, these are them.
Well, she got some, she took all. If you all look at those.
We took these on the thirty-first.
I think these was taken on the second. Second? I don't know either, a couple days ago. But all that behind the trucks gone, and all the way to, can I go up there?
Yes, sure.
Sure. All the way to right here, I got all this here done, but I'm, I'm worried, I got to work on that, it's going to rain.
Valerie, how much, you, you, you're going to continue to get, so, what else you like, other than...
I got that little bit right there, and there's sticked bushes over here, I gotta get all that cut down. And then the porch and the deck, and I, I can do that in two days, if it ain't raining.
When it, when it's wet like it is now, it looks like that's the ditch.
That's the ditch, probably the trees are, huh?
How, how do you get to the vehicle?
Go down in the ditch.
I mean, if it's like, how deep?
I, I waited up here to get to my house.
There's no culvert, nothing there, Steve, it's all gone.
Show him the picture.
Do y'all wanna see the picture?
Just bring it up here and we'll pass it. Oh, you got it on the phone?
I, I prepared that stuff, but, but, this is like the side view of my house. Um, the tree, and then this is the ditch. These are the culverts that were washed up. And then my husband made a makeshift ditch, uh, put some landscape timbers across. Well, the next one came, and it's down, stuck down the ditch, and then we put a board. And there's her house, and you can see where all that's been cleaned up. She has a, this is, this is on this side of the ditch, where the culvert, uh, what do you call it? Cul-de-sac is. And then this is where her driveway technically is. And right here is where she has to go down in the ditch and go up. I mean, the other day, I was helping her get her groceries, we had to throw her groceries across, but, and then-
Yeah, don't buy stuff in glass bottles.
No, no, sir. And then this is, you know, like my, the back of my property. But there's how the water goes all the way up to that truck that's beside her house. And, let's see. This is all to the side of her house where the truck is over there. There's her car with the lawn mowers on this side of the ditch. Like, this is the ditch. And she, we have, she's cleaned up all that. She paid a young guy, and he went over there, and she did. She has worked, I've helped her work, and this is like a, a little burn pile thing going on. So, it's, she, it's not that she's not trying, it's just we can't get it from across the ditch. And, you know, I live, you know where I live.
You don't like bugs or nothing?
I don't like bugs, and I sure am not getting any water that's, I'm gonna flood away. That's, you know. Do y'all need to see them?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, please.
I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to give her some more time to continue to doing what she's doing, to keep, 'cause she's, she's trying to make progress. I know the situation has been ongoing for a long time. And, and I want you to know, Valerie, I al, I always have my eye and ears open for something that would go in the ditch.
Well, I met the Slade, and her husband owns, and I can't think of the name of them red, them, when they build them red, them buildings with them red poles. You know, what I'm talking about? Uh, she says she's got a bunch of that in behind the shop. But her husband's working in Louisiana, but she was gonna get him to come down and build me a bridge out of, out of them bed things.
Okay, um, that's, that's a good idea. Let me just, right quick, tell you, if that's built, it has to be well secured, otherwise the next water comes through, it'll pick that up and float it right off too.
And they had three.
I know, I'm just saying, to build a bridge, it sits there, looks good, but water, it'll pick it up unless it's well secured. So, if that, that's a good idea, but that has to happen.
Okay.
Okay. But again, if I could, some type of culvert or big tank, I'd cut the ends out of it and give it to you. I just-
Well, I mean, I'm not for culverts, but, all my gravel and the culverts went down the ditch.
Well, they're not big enough.
Like that big around.
Okay, well, maybe we need to do a bridge then, okay.
What's your, how long you wanna do it, sixty?
Yeah, because of the weather, I'd say at least sixty days. Would that, that feel good?
When it quits raining, I'm gonna start.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, that, I mean, you can't help the weather.
So the motion is to continue this for another sixty day period, is that correct?
Yes.
Motion, Mr. Morrison, to extend it for a sixty day period. Second, from Mr. Cross, any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries, next, Mr. Slade.
Make sure that that hearing is closed. Item H is the continuation of the Roger and Samantha Moore nuisance property at 182 Sunny- Item H is the continuation of the Roger and Samantha Moore nuisance property, 182 Sunny Lanes, District Three. We'll reopen that public hearing. I'll ask if anyone's here on the Roger and Samantha, if you'll come forward, please. Renee, if you'll demonstrate for us, please.
So, we received a complaint in July of twenty eighteen about a commercial roofing business being operated from this property. It's zoned RMX, which is a residential mixed district, of commercial business is not allowed. These pictures were taken in July of eighteen. And these are September twenty-fourth. And then these are the new pictures that were taken on the second.
So, I mean, is, is the business still being operated there? Have y'all relocated it, or?
What is, oh, I'm Samantha Moore.
Hi, Samantha.
I live there. Oh, well, see, my husband owns a roofing business.
Right.
But, um, he doesn't run it out of our shop. He has Mustangs and stuff, 'cause he races, so he has all those in the shop. He don't do his business out of the shop. We had a-
Just toys, huh?
Sir? Yeah.
Just toys?
Well, he had a, one of his friends stuck his magnet on the front of the door when I called up here when we first got the letter, and they told us to take it down, that maybe, you know, someone thought maybe, 'cause his roofing magnet was on the door, that maybe they thought that we was running it out there.
Mr. Jones, your pleasure?
I think one of the, the biggest complaints we get is the trailers there with the shingles and all on them. That's the biggest complaint that we're getting there.
How long do they stay there? Do you, I mean, are they there for periods of time?
Well, the one with the shingles on it, when he was bringing it home, on the back tire there, he had it blow out, and it messed the axle up or something, so he can't. Until we get the shingles off of it, we can't, you know, move it, 'cause he can't haul it off to get it done.
Wait a minute, you can jack it up and change tires?
Yeah, he can, yeah, he can jack it up, but he hasn't done it yet.
Okay.
What's his timeline on that, you think?
Well, when we got the court letter to go to court, he was gonna get out there, then all the rain came, 'cause he does plan on, you know, getting it up.
Yeah, that's a direct conflict, what we were told, as I'm sure you're aware, whenever all this came about, that it was sold to you guys as a business, to operate your business out of it.
What?
And, yeah, you're a guy that did it.
Huh, my guy?
Yeah.
Which guy's that?
The one that just left here.
Uh, oh, is this down in, um, Towns' property?
Yeah, we bought it from Mr. Townsend.
The property you bought?
Mm-hmm, we just paid it off right after we got the letter.
Yeah.
He's a popular man. How many acres are here?
We own seven lots right there.
Seven lots?
Yes, sir. There are like hundred by hundred on the lots. We own seven of them.
So, we definitely got to-
Two or three, three acres.
You know, stuff moved out.
Yeah, we, like, all the burnt house in the first picture, you know, of it, had all the wood house. We did, you know, get all that.
Yeah, I'll say three acres to a lot.
Just get him to move the trailer.
Hang on, I got too many people going on here.
Make sure that your trailer's got tags on, and that you're not running a business out of it, and-
Exactly. Jay's going. We work off- So, you're here because somebody in the community is concerned about y'all operating the business. Your, you and your husband's best approach to deal with that, as an ongoing concern, is to get rid of anything that might appear to be business related that's at that site, and get it out of you, and then do everything you can to not operate any sort of business activity out of that. It's a residence, okay? So, that's your best, but you wanna stay out of this and not have to come back up here. That's what needs to happen. Get rid of the business stuff that's there, and switch, and don't operate it.
And we, and we understand, you know, he brings the materials home when he's doing, coming home from the job, from, maybe day two or for the weekend, whatever the case may be. But just really can't be any longevity for them staying there, even to the point where if it's broken down, we understand, a month maybe, but it, and it needs to be all floated and moved on and stuff like that. What's your pleasure, Mr. Jones?
Just declare the nuisance, let us monitor it.
Alright, we're gonna declare it a nuisance. I'll make a motion to declare it a nuisance. Stay in touch with Mr. Jones, and he'll work with you on this, and we wanna work with you on it. But, we are going, I'm gonna move that we declared a nuisance. Second, by Mr. Cross, all in favor say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Mr. Gaines, you got a question?
How long did, there was some chatter. Were we giving her some time to get this trailer?
Well, we just wanted to declare it, let her work with Dwayne. I think of the issues that axle is messed up and that, so I figure, you know, as long as she's, as long as they keep moving in the right direction, we'll work with them, you know. Thank you, ma'am, we appreciate it. Alright, Mr. Slade, we got one more, let's like-
This hearing is closed. We'll have a continuation now of the Lisa Gibson nuisance property, 5912 Grant's Ferry Road, District Two. We will reopen that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here on the Gibson matter.
Well, it's like eight corner lane.
Okay. Renee, if you will, please demonstrate.
We've received complaints on this property through the years. This was continued from the September twenty-seventh meeting, and there was a question of legal ownership of the property. Ms. Gibson does have a certificate of title with her today, Craig. So, but anyway, there's some, still some ongoing issues. She said that there's a, a illegal dump on the property, but there's a lot of-
Illegal dump?
It's in the back. You see the house right there?
Yep.
It's two acres behind there, and if you go behind there, you'll see where they're digging it out now. So, in essence, I've been saying they're stealing my dirt. But in essence, what they're doing, as well as stealing the dirt, they made a legal dump site.
They filling it in.
A landfill, they made a landfill, so they, they let all the dump trucks come and dump right in the back.
What road is it on? That's District Two?
Grant's Ferry Road.
Grant's Ferry, and so-
It's across the street.
Exactly.
It's in District Two.
Right.
It's barely, you-
Not to be confused. It's not-
So-
Across the street.
Back to the windowsill.
Yeah, back to Council. Yeah.
Right, and right there in front of Landchew Lake.
She also said that the shop burned.
This shop right here burned down. James Shavers', the shop that y'all said was an exist-
Really? Oh, really?
The shop burned down?
Yeah.
And he did not get a permit to come and rebuild. So he rebuilt the shop without a permit, and without my legal wa-
I'm gonna ask you this, who, who owns the property?
Lisa Gibson. Me.
You, you, you own it?
Mm-hmm.
So, tell me where we go from here, Mr. Slade? Same point, is it just gonna fall back on her back?
Oh, it's on my back. It's on my back.
Alright, so, alright, so tell me your plan from here.
We're going to Justice Court.
We are?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. You got a, you got a game plan, you ready to go?
Yes. Uh, the only other thing that I, I gotta do is, I got to clean the property, so it's on my back. So I got, uh, the guys that I got to clean the property, they won't let them up there. So, I gotta take the police department up there with me. So I plan to do that Saturday.
Okay.
So, I plan to get all the dump trucks moved, everything moved. But in the back, where they got this great big old hole, I asked that Mr. Jones go out and look, because-
I would be careful about what all you say from here, point.
Okay.
Because this is your property.
I, I don't wanna hear anymore about that right now, the landfill part of it.
This is your property.
We're being recorded right here, you should leave it alone.
Whatever happens is gonna be your responsibility.
Oh, yeah, I gotta, I, I, that's why I'm going to court.
The main thing is, I just wanna hear that you're working on, you got a plan, and it looks like you got it scripted out pretty well, and some people lined out, so.
Would it help her for us to go ahead and send it up there? I mean, not to help her, I don't know how that, never help you, but she's going there anyhow.
Yeah, I'm going on the thirteenth of February.
Well, sounds like, that's civil, though.
Yeah, I guess my thing is, if we forward it up, it's gonna put it all directly, I know it is on her back anyway, but, I mean, if, 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 if he's got a plan to work it.
Can't have our power behind it, though.
Yeah, but they're gonna find her, and, wants the Justice Court taking in their own hands and dealing with her?
Not, not letting it help them.
That's what I'm saying, I, I wanna, I wanna do something to help you with the property, is what I'm trying to say.
But it can't, it can't come back.
I, I wanna do something to try to help you with it, so I'm trying to figure out our best process to help you put power behind what you're trying to do, so, that's what we're-
Okay.
That's a zoning matter.
Okay.
And it's only related, Jay, that would only be related to that actual use. It's our, our ability to address the condition of property.
Well, I was just trying to figure out some way to help you out, but-
Right.
Daniel, I'm sorry, I'm stepping on you there. Jay had a valid question about some other issue that's related to zoning, not nuisance directly, so I wanted to make sure we didn't let that get into the middle of what we're talking about here.
Yeah, here's, here's, here's kinda my two cent suggestion. My, my thoughts would be, let's give you time to work your process, and Slade, tell me if we get outside the parameters of it, but let's give you time to work your process through Justice Court. Come back in thirty days, Dwayne?
If, that, Justice Court, I don't go until the thirteenth.
Okay, it's on the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Alright, so-
Thirty, forty-five, sixty.
Sixty days, either one, I'm fine with that. And then we come back here, and if you haven't got the traction and cleaned up where you're at, we'll take action and move from that point. But that gives you a little window and umbrella to work, and you can say, you've got the power of the county, saying you've got a little extension to, to deal with your problem.
Okay.
Do that work on that, Slade?
Yeah.
Dwayne?
Thirty, you tell them happy Valentine's.
Yeah.
Once it, once it gets cleared.
Yeah.
Let me, let me give us just a little more facts while everybody's here to help us. One of the reasons why I was interested in seeing the certificate of title was to give us a better handle on ownership, actual ownership of the property. And clearly, there is a dispute. We, you feel strongly that you own it, and the certificate of title probably suggests that as much. But that is simply, a certificate of title is, it's an opinion with the weight of an attorney's opinion as to title, with the weight of an insurance, a liability insurance policy that attorney has, that says, if I make a goof up on this, it's on me. So, it's a strong document to have, but it is not the final determination.
Oh, I got the deed of trust as well.
Yeah, so a deed of trust obviously is-
Here it is. Oh, okay, so you didn't wanna see the-
Yeah, let me, let me look right quick. Bob, you know this fellow, David Moore?
Those were tax liens that I had to go look at all.
If they deed, if they deed this, and I heard property, we'll start all over if you land on it.
Yep. So, so David, David has rendered his legal opinion that Ms. Gibson is the owner of the property. That's, that is strong evidence of her ownership. As long as there is a dispute among potential heirs to property or-
How are there, I got wiggish. How are you an heir if you don't own the property?
Yeah, so by virtue of being an heir of a person who did own it, they, they-
But he lost it. He lost, I had to go to foreclosure and get it.
I understand, I understand. Until, here's the end of the game. If there is a dispute as to ownership, and clearly there are those out there who are behaving and operating as if they have some claim to that property somehow, it may be totally invalid. But until the fellow wearing the black robe with the gavel says, there is your owner with an order vesting title and clearing all clouds on title, that dispute creates a difficulty for us and for Ms. Gibson. The only person that we can look to is the owner, and what I'm telling you guys is, until we have a court order, we're not gonna really be able to establish who that is.
Right, right.
Can Justice Court give her that?
No, that's a chance record matter. And there, there, there's gonna have to, eventually there's gonna have to be some sort of confirmation action or other client title type of action, which is the way that a chance record declares for all purposes to anyone, this lady right here is the owner, okay? And, and until you get to that point, there's gonna continue to be uncertainty about ownership. And you're just saying that we own it, or producing something like a certificate of title, is actually not, that is not adequate to get it all the way to where I'm telling you. It's right up here. So, I feel strongly, especially with David's certificate, that she has a valid claim of ownership, and she's standing in front of you guys saying, I own it, and she's moving to take action, that suggests that she owns it, and she's spending money to get that done, and she's working with Justice Court. Those are all good things, and I think the sixty days is part of the way to go, Danny, at the end of the day. But I wanna make sure that we're all clear about this. We're in uncertainty as to ownership.
Yeah.
And so, it makes it difficult for us to-
Just legally, he's not saying he don't believe it.
We can't make that call, we say-
Oh, okay, I mean, I'm trying to under- Oh, okay, I mean, I'm trying to understand, what do you need? What else do you need? That's, I guess.
A judge, a judge saying, bam, it's yours.
Yeah, we, we don't, we can't make, we're not a jury in here.
Okay, so you want me to go get a warranty deed?
No, we.
Well, yeah, I have to do that.
Now, here's, here's basically the, the full summation of everything. Run on the process you're going right now. You've got it all lined out, you got your game plan, proceed on. We're gonna give you sixty days to wrap up your ends.
Okay.
Get it taken care of. We're gonna come back in sixty days, Dwayne, and figure out where we're at, and see where we need to go from that point. That's basically what we're doing.
Yeah.
You, you proceed the way your head is going.
I don't think that even if we wanted to, that we'd be successful with any action until she or somebody determines who owns the property.
We can't.
That we don't believe yet. And it's nice to have somebody in here saying, I own it, and I'll take responsibility, but legally, we gotta wait.
But she thinks she's got the documentation.
I think I got the documentation.
Hey, so, so, go with it. That's what I'm saying, so go with it. So, go with it.
Okay, so I think I got the documentation. But my thing is, I don't care what they're saying, because we're going to court. But my other thing is, if I'm responsible for it, every time, you know, I got to come in here and I'm responsible for it, and I got to get it cleaned up, then they got to go. I mean, I, I, I mean, if they can show you some documentation where they own it.
Hey, me and you are on the same sheet, we're singing together.
Okay.
I think you see that, we all.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so, 'cause I gotta go Saturday, 'cause I gotta get it cleaned up.
We're all on your side.
Okay.
But we can't, we can't make that final decision.
I, I get what you're saying, 'cause I was trying to understand what he was saying.
All right, there is.
What I want this lady to hear, since she's here.
Okay.
In order for you to be able to run them off, you got to have more than the direction you're headed with it.
Okay, so what I need?
What I'm saying is that when you get to justice court, unfortunately, if they show up, and if they say, hey, Judge, we have a claim of ownership to this, and she may have a certificate of title, but we have a valid claim of ownership, and they can convince that justice court judge that they have some sort of ownership, he's gonna run all of y'all out of there and say, y'all go get this ownership issue straight, and then I'll know who to deal with.
Okay.
You follow that?
Mm-hmm.
I'm suggesting to you that I've seen enough, unless you've got other documents that I hadn't seen, I've seen enough to tell you, you don't have everything you need to establish valid ownership in you vested without anything else.
I got one question.
And you got enough.
I got one question.
Last question, Ms. Gibson.
Okay. Yeah, I got the deed of trust, and I bought, and it was in foreclosure.
I don't.
Okay, I, I, well, I'm just asking.
You got what the bank thought they had. And if, and sometimes banks don't have all, it's the difference in a warranty deed and a deed of trust.
Okay, so where do I get the warranty deed from?
Go, get a lawyer and go through chance record.
Oh, so I, from the people that I, did the foreclosure.
You should have a foreclosure deed.
Cool, so that's what I need, that's what I need to go get. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
If you can show that, and it better be in the land records, it's got to be filed on the land records. If that happens, I'm good.
Okay.
We go, we're walking now.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
If she can run them off, if she can produce that.
Okay, the foreclosure deed.
There, there is a motion, there is a motion on the table to post, to continue this for sixty days by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Morris, and all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign.
Okay, thank you.
We might want more discussion.
No, I just wanna say one.
Is that it?
I got one thing, go ahead, Jay. If you do happen to get those documents, you can forego the justice court deal, you know, then you come straight here.
Okay.
You know, so, you know.
Been doing a holiday studying legal.
She, she might be able to get some help with law enforcement if she can produce the foreclosure deed.
Yeah.
If you can do that, you might get some help from, from, from enforcement to run them off.
Jay, you're in a legal library for Christmas.
Ms. Renee, anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Slade, anything else?
All right. Not, not in, we, just, for the record, that hearing is closed.
Okay, thank you.
The next meeting is our motion to recess until January 31st, 2019, by Mr. Cross, second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Let the record reflect, we are recessed in the planning commission meeting. Let the record reflect, we are now going into the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting. At this point in time, though, I am going to ask, Mr. Slade, are we heading in that direction?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna ask that we go into executive session. I'll entertain a motion that we discuss the need to go into executive session by Mr. Cross, second by myself, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The need for executive session is?
Economic development.
Is economic development, motion by Mr. Cross, second by myself, all in favor, say aye.